Okay, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I’m going to call the West Covina City Council to order. Tonight is Tuesday, November 15th. We will begin with our invocation led by our city manager, Andrew Pasmat, followed by our pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Karen Armbrust. Please rise.
Our Father in Heaven, you are most holy and blessed. You are our rock, our strength and our might. We ask that you guide our leaders tonight as they make the difficult decisions for this community. Help us to walk worthily in your presence and forgive us when we fall short. We pray that you comfort those troubled and in need and bring them peace. May your Holy Spirit guide us in all our actions and our conduct and may heaven and earth always declare your glory and honor forever through your son we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk parole call.
Mayor Chairman Herrford.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Vice Chairman Tui. Councilmember Commissioner Armbrust.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sanderson.
Here.
Okay, we’re going to have a report out from closed session. We’re also going to have our attorney address the issue of the YouTube video. So if Mr. Glassman, if you’d go ahead. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. The record should reflect the City Council convene this evening for the discussion of closed session items that were all listed on the agenda, the special meeting agenda, that all five members of the City Council and the redevelopment agency, or sorry, the Community Development Commission were present. And the following is my, the record should further reflect that prior to recessing into closed session, that all the items that were listed on the agenda were announced for discussion in closed session. And the following is my report. I’ll first deal with the conference of legal counsel existing litigation. There were a number of items. First was the Constantini versus City of West Covina matter. Concerning that item, the City Council was briefed by legal counsel. Direction with respect to that matter was provided with possible resolution of this matter, but there was no final action and there is nothing further to report. On the Hernandez versus City Council matter, the City Council was also briefed on this matter, but there was no action taken and there is nothing to report. On the Williams versus City of West Covina matter, the City Council did provide directions to special counsel regarding filing a motion for summary judgment. That matter was approved by vote of four to one with the mayor voting in opposition to the filing of that motion. But since there was no final action taken, there is nothing further to report. On the Chung versus City of West Covina matter, there was no final action taken and additionally nothing to report at this time. On the, excuse me, on the Community Development Commission versus El Hassan matter, the Community Development Commission did authorize retention of special bankruptcy counsel from the law firm Esquire Sanders and consistent with the terms expressed in closed session, that was unanimous. The public employment matter, which was the city manager’s item, was not discussed this evening. Moving on to conference of real property negotiators, this first related to the property located at the West Covina Sportsplex site as listed on the agenda involving the negotiating party of Aminé Gabay. The record should reflect that CDC member and Councilmember Tui recused himself for participating in this matter and excused himself from the room inasmuch as he provided services for this individual or this company and did not participate. Concerning this matter, the balance of the City Council and the CDC heard this matter and did provide direction but took no final action and there is nothing further to report. Moving on to the second item of real property negotiations, the property located 811 South Sunset Street. The record should further reflect that all five members of the CDC and City Council were present in the room on the discussion of that matter. There was a briefing made to the City Council and the CDC concerning this piece of property, but there was no action provided with respect to the sale or lease of this property and there is nothing required by law to be reported at this time. Moving on to the last item that was discussed in closed session, this relates to conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation. The record should further reflect that all five members of the City Council were present in closed session on the discussion of this item. And this was presented pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 subdivision C, which relates to the possibility of the city taking legal action against parties involved in one matter. And this does, as the mayor indicated, relate to the recent video that appeared on YouTube. At this time, the direction provided was as follows. “The City of West Covina takes very seriously the misappropriation and misuse of public property and resources which are depicted in this recent video. The city did not authorize the use of its vehicles or any related city images and intends to ascertain all parties involved in this inappropriate and unauthorized conduct. The City Council has directed its attorneys and staff to contact the Los Angeles County District Attorney’s Office to evaluate if there is any criminal conduct to be prosecuted and to proceed with all available civil remedies to recoup the cost of this misuse of public property, including all investigative and disciplinary costs associated therein. Any discipline of police and city personnel is currently under investigation and will be addressed at a future date.” That was the direction provided unanimously by the City Council concerning this matter. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report from closed session. It’s appropriate to continue with the open portion of the meeting.
Thank you, City Attorney. And for the press, any comments will be directed towards the City Attorney, so you can answer your questions of him. At this time, we will move on to our presentations portion of the agenda. Now, we have a special presentation. Mr. Freeland, if you could, we’re going to see a video first. Let me give you kind of a lead in as to what you’re going to see. Last Thursday night, the City of West Covina was in the running for an award through the net, the, let me get the organization correct here, the, Los Angeles Economic Development Council for the Eddie Award for the most business-friendly city in Los Angeles County. We were in the running for cities over 60,000 competing against Carson, Burbank, Glendale, who was it? Torrance. And we were victorious in receiving the award. So we’re going to have a little video lead in and then we’ll do a presentation after that. So with that, Mr. Freeland, can we get the lights, please?
First incorporated in 1923, West Covina was home to sprawling walnut in orange groves and just 507 original residents. From 1950 to 1960, West Covina grew from 5,000 to 50,000 residents. Today, it has more than 106,000 residents, all part of a rich, growing community. West Covina is a great place to live, work and play, and it’s a popular choice for businesses and retailers. As a full-service city, police and fire services are the number one priority, followed closely by a wide variety of recreational and cultural facilities, diverse shopping and restaurant choices, some of the best schools in the nation, and many affordable housing options. According to a recent survey, West Covina was ranked as one of the lowest-cost cities in LA County for opening a business. And that means great value for businesses and residents alike. And West Covina schools are among the top in the nation. With numerous state and federal accolades, West Covina is also a popular regional shopping destination with two major shopping centers, an Auto Plaza, professional office buildings, and the Wells Fargo Tower. West Covina has also made a commitment to being a green community. A great place to live and raise a family, and a great place to work and conduct business. West Covina, welcome home.
Okay, as I stated, we did receive the award for the most business-friendly city for cities over 60,000, and we’re really, really excited about it. It’s a great award, and these economic times, it really means a lot. I’d like to call forward Mr. Bob Machuca, the Senior Regional Manager of the Los Angeles Economic Development Corporation, and he will present the award. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my pleasure really to be here tonight to really honor the outstanding commitment to economic development and business friendliness for this coveted award. The LA EDC, let me just talk about the LA EDC. The LA EDC is a private nonprofit corporation. We’ve been around for about 30 years, and our mission is really to attract, retain and grow businesses in Los Angeles County. And the LA EDC is known as the premier economic development corporation for basically most of Southern California. Now, the LA EDC has been holding the annual Eddie Awards. And Eddie stands for Economic Development, recognizing individuals and cities that really have an outstanding contribution to economic development here in LA County. We instituted the Eddie Awards for the most business-friendly city in 2006. And this year, in 2011, we had two San Gilbert Valley cities. We had the city of Monrovia for a city under 60,000 residents, and then we had the city of West Covina for the larger city, over 60,000 residents. Now, you know, I know it’s a long drive from West Covina, from the San Gilbert Valley to Beverly Hills, because we had the Eddie Awards in Beverly Hills. And it’s especially a long drive back when you don’t come back as a winner. And sometimes you feel like, you know what Susan Lucci feels like, you know, going and not winning the award. But I could tell you, this year in 2011, the ride back for West Covina was a ride of pride and elation, because you saw in the video, you see the signs here. I mean, West Covina really prides itself in being a city that really is committed to business friendliness. They have expedited streamlined permitting. They have a great department that has ombudsman services to meet with businesses. And they’ve demonstrated beyond that they are a city that is really business friendly. And that is so important in these times. And you hear stories about, you know, there was a story in LA Times about the toxic California and the onerous rules and regulations, but West Covina has proved beyond that that they are a city that is business friendly. So on behalf of the LA EDC and the panel, the Blue Ribbon Panel of Judges and the LA County Board of Supervisors, it is my pleasure to recognize and to re-recognize, because again, this was given during the Eddie Awards, but to re-recognize again the City of West Covina. Congratulations. There’s a scroll coming from the LA County Board of Supervisors, but we couldn’t get it in time, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I will deliver that to Chris and to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. And let me add on to what Bob said. Part of being the most business-friendly city is also low cost. We were one of the few cities that doesn’t have a utility user tax or a business license tax. We also have our own police and fire department, our own services, and that’s pretty unique amongst cities too. So when we talk about West Covina and the things that we do here and the positive things we do, there are a lot of them. So let me also thank these people here and everybody that works behind them. These are our department heads. They are the ones that, in fact, Chris Freeland put together our video and our presentation. We want to thank him for that. And to my colleagues on the council, it takes the leadership team to really have this come together. And the people that presented these awards to us were very complimentary and we really did appreciate it. So, and to the residents, this is yours too, because without you shopping at our businesses and going to our doctors and doing things in the city, this would never happen. So it’s a great award and we will put it in our trophy case. Okay? I think at this time, if there’s any questions to the press of our attorney, I think we’re going to release our attorney during oral communications and that way the press can answer any questions. Okay, first speaker tonight, Forrest Wilkins. This is oral communication. This is a time for residents to come forward on any item under the purview of the City Council. You have five minutes, and we ask that you submit a yellow card. So Forrest?
Good evening. I have addressed the City Council in the past, and just to refresh your memory, I’m retired Los Angeles police officer, 30 years. I spent 11 months and 10 days in Vietnam, so I have seen violence. My remarks I’m going to make are not intended to be personal attacks on anybody, but I think they are for the betterment of our community. And I view my remarks as constructive criticism. The hit piece that I received in the mail in the Friday before election is totally unacceptable. Return address showed San Juan Capistrano, but two people that were running for the City Council had their names on the flyer. For those two City Council people, I think they should send out a glossy flyer, such as a glossy flyer that appeared in the mail, apologizing for those remarks.
Forrest, I’m going to stop you right there, because believe me, it wasn’t sent from me and it wasn’t sent from Karen. If you’re doing a hit piece, you don’t put your names on it. So I’ll just, I’ll tell you that right now.
There is no place that a gun should be used to try to scare voters not to vote for an individual. Using a photo of a gun is promoting violence. We have a relative in our family who was a bank teller over 25 years ago. It was a bank robbery. She had a gun placed to her head. She still hasn’t recovered from that trauma. Violence is no place to be on the political scene. Thank you.
And I will agree with you.
I will agree.
And I just want to reiterate, the hit piece is not from Karen and I, and when we saw it, we were not happy and obviously we wouldn’t have put our names on it, so.
Steve, can I say one more thing?
Sure.
Don’t you think it would be appropriate for an apology, help the community fix it?
You know, I-
I just did. I didn’t authorize it, and I’m not going to apologize because I didn’t authorize it, but I will say that it wasn’t from my campaign and I didn’t authorize it and I didn’t send it, so.
And it wasn’t from mine either. And I called Mr. Sykes on Wednesday to tell him congratulations and also too to let him know that I had nothing to do with that. And the fact that someone would even use my name is really, really irritating. The fact that someone can sit there and grab your name and put you on some stupid hit piece like that is absolutely ridiculous. So again, I apologize that he even thought that would have anything to do with me. If I was going to say something to somebody, I would tell them to their face. I would not use something like that that would attack someone. Again, that’s ridiculous, and I did call him. Right, Mr. Sykes?
Yes.
Thank you.
And if you got my mail, I challenged it on issues. I didn’t challenge on silly little things, you know that. I sent the snowball mailer at the end, so, I mean, I talked about issues. Mr. Lloyd Johnson.
You know, one thing, if I could say one thing?
Sure.
You know, there were three names on there. Sykes, Herrford, and Armbrust. There were four people running. Who would be the one person who would possibly benefit from that?
Mr. Johnson?
Okay, good evening. Mayor Herrford, councilmembers. First, I think everyone knows I have two passions. One is for our veterans and the other is for animal rights. And we all know I don’t mix words. I say what I feel. So here it goes. What do these cities have in common? San Dimas, South Almani, Almani, Covina, Azusa, Irwindale, Baldwin Park, La Prue, Monterey Park, Ontario, Pasadena, and many more. They all felt that it was important enough to show all their veterans how they feel about them and to thank them for what they have done for our great country by celebrating Veterans Day with their veterans, which is November the 11th, just in case our city doesn’t know that. I would like to know this council, I would like to, I would like to let this council know, I don’t feel it’s their responsibility to hold this celebration. But as a disabled Vietnam veteran who fought for our great country, it saddens me to think I have to go to another city to have someone say thank you for what you have done for our country. I don’t understand why our city staff just doesn’t feel that it’s important enough to show the kind of respect to our veterans that live in West Covina. We have to go to other cities to celebrate this important day. The excuse about the economy isn’t good enough when all these other cities feel that without these veterans, they wouldn’t have a great country to live in. I spoke on this issue a couple of years ago, then last year we had a ceremony. I shouldn’t have to remind our city that showing respect and thanking our veterans is the right thing to do. I would hope starting next year, our city realizes that without our veterans and the sacrifice they have paid, having a celebration for them is well worth the monetary cost it would cost our city. Saying that the VFW or the American Legion hold a celebration isn’t good enough, though not the City of West Covina. And just in case, starting from our city manager and the rest of the city staff, I don’t know if you’ve forgotten, but freedom isn’t free. And if you love your freedom, thank a vet. Actions speak louder than words. Next year, let’s show our veterans how much we care, not just saying how much we care. And the last thing, I would, what I would like to know, when I read in the paper about this video, our city manager said he knew about this in September. What I would like to know, why didn’t our council find out about it right after he knew about it? I mean, this is something that if it’s, if the city staff knows about it, you guys should have known about it, each and every one of you. And if you guys known about it, we should have known something about it. We shouldn’t have to hear about it in the newspaper or on TV and stuff like this. I think that, like you say, I agree with the way, what you guys said, everybody involved should be prosecuted. There should be some lawsuits against the company that did the video, and I hope we go forward through this. And I would just like to say, you know what? Transparency was hidden here, because I do believe when our city manager found out, it should have been brought forward to the council, and the council, something should have been said. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could comment?
Councilwoman Armbrust?
I just want you to know, I went on behalf of the city to the Regency Grand to all the vets that were there and gave a speech and gave out awards to all the vets. So we did have something. Thank you.
And I think we all attended events, so I don’t think you can say that we weren’t participating. Brittany Hill?
Hello. I’m a little nervous, so, excuse me. My name is Brittany Hill and I’m a resident here in West Covina. I’ve been here about three years. I like posed the idea for a dog park. Almost everybody, every other person in the city owns a dog. And there’s lots of grassy area, there just needs to be a fence around it and call it a dog park so our dogs can run around off their leeches. And of course, it’s also a place where humans can meet and have doggy play dates and all that fun stuff. The next idea I would like to pose is a gay and lesbian center. Now, I think our city is like kind of behind all the rest of the cities when it comes down to gay and lesbian issues. I myself am not a part of the gay and lesbian community, but I have friends and family that are. And even support groups are so deeply hidden in this community because of the shame that they feel that the people that really need it can’t even find it. So I think gay and lesbian centers are not just for gay and lesbian people. They raise awareness and teach tolerance. That’s all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Joanne Willner?
Joanne Willner, West Covina. Good evening to all. Congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, on your reelection, and congratulations too to Fred Sykes on his election to council. I guess three times is the charm. I again ask you all to pull item number four from the consent calendar, exclusive negotiation agreement with CGM Development, Inc. Not only should you not even be thinking about extending the agreement, but too much precious time and other costs have been wasted on a project that is not plausible from the outset. Why discuss the sale of civic center when property, civic center property, when the people of West Covina and the general plan do not call for any such development? I do understand that money is desperately in need to balance the budget, but the sale of the civic center land and destruction of the green park area for parking is a one-time thing that can never be replaced. This is not the way to do it. The image of the city will be forever changed by building a four-story medical condo building and giving a variance for a restaurant as well. Where will any future expansion of the civic needs of the city go? This kind of discussion should not be held behind closed doors. A public discussion throughout the city needs to be held regarding such changes to the general plan. Then, when the philosophy of the city has been changed, if it is, negotiation should be held in closed session. Let’s have transparency by the council and inclusion of all the citizenry in deciding the direction of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Shirley Buchanan?
Good evening, council, and congratulations, Mayor Herrford and Fred Sykes, on your recent In June of this year, I spoke under oral communication, and the minutes reflect that I addressed transparent issues from a previous meeting. I commented on the development of the golf course, and I requested that an item be removed from the agenda. I also stated that since the city should be receiving some revenue from Big League Dreams in 2010, 11, I requested that an annual report on Big League Dreams be made available to the public. One of the council members asked Mr. Bachmann if that could be made available, and his answer was yes. I stopped to talk with Mr. Bachmann on the way out of the chamber and asked when an annual report would be available, and he assured me that it would be forthcoming. Since it was, the 2012 budget preparation was being done and closing the books for 2011, I have not pursued the matter. Now that we are in November, I would like to make a second request for a copy of the annual report on Big League Dreams. In another matter related to Big League Dreams, in 2008, a question was asked of a member of the redevelopment agency as to how much money was being generated by Big League Dreams, and the answer was that Big League Dreams generates sales tax and operating revenue. However, sales tax information is confidential by law and cannot be disclosed. I would like the city manager to send me the reference as to sales tax information being confidential. The last thing I would like to talk to you about is that I also would like you to pull the item on the Ian agreement, because I feel that any plans to extend the agreement for another 90 days will only prolong what can result in a heated conflict between City Hall and the community. I am not a tree hugger, but I do want the city to become, do not want the city to become nothing but cement pads and sidewalks. Please deny CGM’s request for an extension or provide alternate direction that will allow the trees to remain, and do not sell city property for an office building. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Herb Reynolds?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I want to congratulate you, Mr. Mayor, on your reelection and Mr. Sykes on his election. And I want to commend the voters of this city for voting colorblind in this election. I think it speaks highly of the diversity in our city. I would like to make a comment. I wasn’t prepared to address this, but, Mr. Mayor, if, Ms. Armbrust, if you’re insinuating or implying that I had anything whatsoever to do with that despicable hit piece, put up or shut up. I had nothing whatsoever to do with that. Okay? Nothing. I didn’t spend my time running for City Council to put out hit pieces. I put out the campaign that spoke to the issues, unlike you. Now, let me just say this. I didn't spend my time running for city council to put out hit pieces. I put out the campaign that spoke to the issues, unlike you. Now, let me just say this, very quickly. I am proud of the more than 2,200 votes that I did receive. I was told that, you know, I had, you know, no money, no name recognition, and, you know, and, you know, did I win? No. But let me tell you something. I'm very confident and enthused about the reaction I've gotten since the election, the phone calls, the emails that I've received encouraging me to go forward. And things are different now than they were just a couple of months ago. My name recognition is significantly increased. I now have a voter base to build on, and I'm here to tell you tonight that in 2013, I again will be on the ballot, and I will again do my best to get elected, to get on this city council for this city for which I have a passion for. And it's, you know what? I am just so irritated and annoyed at even being accused of something like that. It just makes my blood boil. And again, put up or shut up. If you have any evidence that I had anything to do with that, bring it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not gonna allow applause. Let's just say right here that not one, three, none of us did it, so let's agree on that.
I didn't accuse anybody.
Yeah, well, somebody accused me later, earlier, so we're all denying we did it, and I'll swear on the Bible I didn't do it, so. Anyway, Irene Fleck.
Good evening. This isn't about the library. Next month will be. I'm concerned about the project, the proposed project too, just as many people are. And there are three things that have really bothered me. The first is safety, and the second is traffic, and of course, the third is environmental. So let me just read you what I've come up with. And congratulations also.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. The safety item, with the immense parking lots, and so many cars looking for places to park, and others are hopping out of their cars to go to the library or other facilities, I'm concerned about safety. People often have armloads of materials, particularly the kids, and lots of computers these days as they enter the library and they exit. And the drivers being busy to looking for parking spaces, which happens in the size that we have right now, are often distracted. And that really, that potential danger really concerns me. And the traffic situation, although the freeway intersections has been mitigated, the traffic on West Covina Parkway has not. And with the increase of the cars trying to get in and out of the parking for the library and the health department, it's already very difficult to get in and out there. And with the addition of such huge parking lots, also with the possibility of a gate-type entry, there's going to be an awful lot of waiting and trying to get back onto West Covina Parkway. And we'll also have the very busy bus stop there, so I think that's a real problem. And then the environmental. For many of us West Covinians, our civic center island with its park-like grounds is part of the city's history. The landscaping on the berms and the stately trees in the parking lot and in surrounding grounds are like a pocket park. The natural beauty is good for the body, the mind, and the disposition. This is not just a library thing. This area is visited and used by many people, out for a breath of fresh air, a nice safe walk, or for visual pleasure. It's famous for its use as a photo spot for weddings and for quinceañeras. The stretch limos are often out there on the weekend with all the people in their beautiful car. The civic center, I've even seen civic center people out there walking and enjoying it. It's truly a community thing, and I hope we don't lose it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Shoemaker.
Thank you. What I'd like to say is, after your comment, why don't we get together in the next week or so and go drive down to that company? Because if they did a bulk mailer, they're required to, when it goes to the post office, show where it came from, have a copy of it associated with it, and the name of who it was mailed for. And let's put an end to who did it. You know, the only thing I can, you know, it was absolutely ridiculous. I will take your word for it, but I'd like to find out who did it.
That's fine.
Because that's what we need to do, so, you know, you guys have my number, just give me a call, and we'll set a time up, and we'll go down there and try to figure it out.
Sounds good, thank you.
See what's going on. The other thing I'd like to talk about, what I really came up here to talk about, is the situation with that video. You know, I'm sorry to say that it just strikes me as being more of a problem. Conceivably, in the command structure, you have to start at the top. You know, it's unfortunate, because I know a lot of those people, and I respect those people, and I, you know, consider some of them to be friends of mine who I've talked with about various issues in the past. But you start looking at some of the things that have gone on over the last few years. Tyler Kennedy and his book, and the issues that were raised, because he got put into handling sexual assaults, and he wrote a book that I think anybody who really took a look at it would go, maybe this isn't the best person to put there. That's a command decision. You start looking at some of the training that has been cut back because of budget cuts, and the amount of money that we have had to pay, or the insurance companies have had to pay, or combinations thereof. That's a question in the leadership area. To show you how things have gotten, where you have, you know, people in the field who have lost respect, is I have a six-year-old grandson who, once in a while, I'd pick up from school. And as we'd drive by 24 Hour Fitness, I had to go down a Roma, drives behind it, he'd look over to the left, and he'd go, no police cars there today, grandpa. Now, when I pick somebody up once a week, and they're six years old, and he would remember police cars there, two, three, four, five of them at a time parked behind 24 Hour Fitness, I actually went to the chief one day and said, when did you open a new substation there? There's a problem, that anybody, whether they are sworn or not sworn, associated with the police department, would sit down and allow such a thing to happen. When my daughter took a look at the video, she goes, hey, that was just down the street from us, just up around the corner. I know exactly where it was. And my response was, oh, I know where they got the cars, they just borrowed them from the people sleeping behind the 24 Hour Fitness. That hurts the department. It shows a lack of respect for the leadership, unfortunately, of the city and of the department. And this really needs to stop. This is the type of thing that hurts our community, makes us look like a laughingstock. You know, we're talking about all the money that we have or don't have, and we're going to be spending more of it trying to figure out what happened, or why it happened. No, we've got to start looking at where things are and start making some different decisions. Otherwise, we're going to continue going down this road, and it's just not right. So again, just to reiterate, you start going through what's been going on the last few years, you need to look at the top and make some changes there. Get the attitude changed, fast, or we're going to be hurting a lot more. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna, no applause, please. I'm gonna make a response to that. I want to say something about our police department. It's because some yahoo goes on YouTube and somehow acquires some of our cars, which we will find out who it is, and we will prosecute them to the fullest. There's no indication of our fine police department here. We have men and women putting their lives on the line every day who protect us, and I'm not going to let some YouTube video trash any of these people. And there was no sworn officers involved. Somehow, these producers and these video people, they were able to get three of our cars and some uniforms, and we're going to find out who gave them the cars and who gave them the uniforms. And they will be criminally prosecuted, and we will go after monetary damages for what they did. But for you to make insinuations that that is how our police department is run, that is so off-base and so unfair to the men and women that wear the badge in this city. And I can guarantee you, at the next council meeting, they will be out in full force, and they will defend themselves, because they're the people we call when we call 911, and they come to our neighborhoods and they protect us. And yeah, it's tough economics times, and if I learned one thing in this election, people bite into negativity so quickly because we're hurting. But you know what? In West Covina, this is my hometown, and I'm not going to have people trash in my hometown. I've lived here 51 years, and I'm proud of our department, I'm proud of our staff, I'm proud we won an award for the most business-friendly city, I'm proud of Big League Dreams, I'm proud of everything in this city. And I will continue to say it, and I will not let people trash my city, so please, do not do that. Tom O'Donnell.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Tom O'Donnell. I caught that video the other night. I've been a resident here since 1970. Therefore, I feel I've probably met every police officer in this town at one time or another. They've always been on good, positive terms. If I required any help whatsoever, it was handled professionally and swiftly. Our police officers are second to none. Anybody that ever thinks they can be replaced by some other agency obviously has a few screws left if he lives in this town. I've enjoyed this town since 1970, and it upsets me to see this happen. The only thing that came out of this cartoon that we've been given is, we finally found out where the Tribune gets its sources of information. I'll give up on cartoons on Sunday morning from now on. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time.
Dana Sykes.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about this exclusive negotiating agreement with CGM Development, Incorporated. First of all, they did do the project down near my home on the Gallus and Valley. That project is different than this one, because when they, that was an empty lot. There really wasn't anything there. What we have outside the door here are 141 mature trees. We're not talking, they're probably older than anybody in this. Those trees are a vital source of carbon monoxide that we need to breathe, because as humans, we deplete it. Also, with our technology, it also depletes it even more. Taking 141 off any property in West Covina is wrong, and it also goes against our title of Tree City USA. Because if we're a tree city, why are we chopping down 141? That just seems to be counter, doesn't mesh. Now, I brought the paper with me because the developer made a comment about the fact, and I want to make sure I get this correctly, that all the office spaces in West Covina are very, very old, and a lot of businesses have approached us to say they want our modern, high-quality office space. And that's why we are looking into the possibility of developing the site. Buy one of the old buildings, develop a new one on that property. We already got the concrete's laid, put something that is going to be viable, because there are plenty of empty buildings in this city. And there were, I saw a few of them driving down here. In fact, there's a big pad right there on Amar N'Zusa that would fit that building just nicely, have parking and everything. Again, we have places that this could be more appropriate than taking down the beauty that is outside this door. 141 trees, that is a lot of trees. And if anybody, I have two trees in my yard right now, and every little spurt they make, I'm very proud of. And I was even more proud of the fact I got two dozen pomegranates off one of them, so. But the important part is, we are a Tree City USA, we don't chop down 141 trees. That goes without saying. Thank you very much.
Lloyd Johnson. Lloyd, you already spoke. Did you want to come back? Okay.
Is it a public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, so just come on up.
That's why I had it on the consent calendar. I figured that it was a different item.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, but if you can be brief, that'd be great.
Okay.
Council members, I'm here tonight to say, I don't believe this council should even consider selling this piece of property. You considered this back in 2005, and the residents told you they were against this idea. Now you want to tell the residents of West Covina that you don't care what they care about. Maybe you think people forget over time, and you can just slide this bad idea through without anyone saying anything about it. This decision will have an everlasting negative effect on the civic center, and you will destroy it. There isn't another civic center like ours anywhere that makes it special. And if you do this, we will not forget about it come election time in 2013. And I will say this tonight, I have always supported this council, but I could never support anyone who wants to destroy our beautiful civic center. And I will make sure that the residents know who voted to destroy this beautiful piece of property. I know you're only looking at extending the timeline for this contractor. So tonight, so I'm asking you to abandon this very bad idea and say, we won't destroy our civic center just so the money can be used to balance the budget. So tonight, what I'm asking is, every resident who cares about this piece of property, to show up at the planning commission on November the 22nd and tell the planning commission what a dumb idea this is, and then make plans to be at the council meeting when this dumb idea comes in front of this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes oral communications. Councilmember Tuohy.
I just wanted to respond to some of them. For one, Mr. Shoemaker, John, the way you just make references, we have had issues, and obviously, I believe the issues that we've had in our police department is with certain individuals, and they're the exception, not the rule, and the way you stated it, it like cast a wide brush on everybody. Likewise, where your daughter is a school board member in West Covina Unified, and in today's paper, or yesterday's paper, the 33-year-old who was accused of having a sexual relationship with a 7th grader, I assume, and I would give the benefit of the doubt to every other teacher in West Covina Unified, that that person is the exception, not the rule. So we should not paint with a wide brush every member of whatever agency they may be a part of, that they're all party to what took place, that the person was the exception. So I want to make sure that, number one. I am highly offended by the video, like I have stated, a lot of the things that took place in there. To be able to take our squad cars and to film on a public street without the streets being closed down, and you go code three. If something would have happened, at least the front car driving in that was driven by a non-West Covina public safety employee, whether sworn, non-sworn, it was not a West Covina employee, someone turned over a police car to a private individual and let them speed from the scene. That has disaster written all over it, and the liability of the taxpayers would be huge. The way it's been done on YouTube, that person who filmed it is making money off of it. And I'm highly offended, as we get the bill, he gets the profit, and that needs to end. He has over a million hits on that, he will get paid per hit, and that is just absolutely unconscionable, considering, like I said, we have an internal affairs investigation that will cost us thousands of dollars, much less all the other use. And we have many people filming this city, many times we have been filmed here. I know it's been a while since we had major movies, but we had Good Burger filmed here many years ago at Manny's El Loco, and I know that was a different type of movie. Mighty Joe Young was filmed down on the southern portion of our community, Weapons of Mass Distraction. We've had videos filmed in this council chambers, we've had, Jewel has done videos in our city. There's appropriate way to do it, and most of the people, all the people tell Patrick Scott has always used the appropriate manner, getting a film permit and the proper protections. We would normally close down the streets when those chase scenes are going, and they cost money. So what the person did is hijacked our public streets, and instead of putting up safety barriers, went ahead and used our setting. And I do believe, John, it is by Gallister Park, by the look I see of it, to me, like I said, and I'm not talking about the personnel matter we have going on, but everyone in the movie, everyone who participated in that, who used our cars, you know, our police uniforms are clearly present, you can put an upside-down sergeant patch on it where you see the WS and the VIN-A. It still says West Covina. Those are our uniforms, and we should not allow a guy to copyright his film product to make sure you need to get permission from him to release or do anything with his film. But he took our intellectual properties, the property owned by the taxpayers of West Covina, and used it without the same type of compensation that he expects. This is an outrage, and I believe all of them, whether we can bring criminal charges or not, it won't be determined by us, there's no question. It will be determined by the district attorney. I do believe there were members of law enforcement there, none West Covina sworn law enforcement officer, I need to make sure I state that for the record, none. No West Covina sworn police officer was involved in that. There may have been some members of law enforcement that were there, not of West Covina, so. So I want to make sure there's a distinction there, and whatever happens, happens. But I'm appalled at that, that we spent thousands upon thousands of taxpayers' dollars on that, and that man gets to profit off of it. And we're still not sure if the actors got paid for participating in it, if they were on the clock or not, I have no clue. On the other development, we are going through a process, and I understand some of your concerns, so you understand about the whole development that has been looked at here before. Some of you haven't been to council meetings in the past. This really started by Jim Starbuck in 1995, working with the county of Los Angeles to build on their property, I want to emphasize, for us to allow them to build on their property, of building a Starbucks and a Kinko's and one other building where it would help create revenue for the library. That was then in the past, being pushed by and working with the county of Los Angeles. And I know a lot of people weren't involved necessarily back then, remember that there's been around four different developments there. The county leases up on that property, they do not own the library parking on the western portion of that property. They rent some of the spaces from us on the northern portion and in the parking structure for the courthouse. And that's why we've had other problems, because our neighboring property owners around here do not like the courthouse parking, filling up all their parking spaces for their buildings. And that's what's been going on at LA Fitness, and the medical buildings on the southern portion of the courthouse have security guards and tow trucks that tow the vehicles so their medical patients can park in their parking lot. That's been going on. So I just want to make sure the public was aware of that issue, and that was one of the other issues brought up. On the medical side, so you understand about medical condos, what we found honestly going on at Valley New Gallus, so you understand the difference, most of our medical offices, the doctors, the dentists, the chiropractors, whatever the type of medicine they do, they've never been in the ability to buy their building. I understand, you said this, buy an office building. That still just keeps them a renter if you remodel a building. The buildings that we've been being asked to do lately in communities overall, has been condos, medical condos, where the doctors, the private practitioners, may own their own property. So it is different. You can't just find those anywhere. And not every doctor can afford to buy a $15 million office building for him to have a 5,000-square-foot office in it. So most our medical, in medical buildings we have in our community are for rental options only for the doctors. And if, according, next to the Queen of the Valley, most of those properties are all rentals that the doctors can get, and a lot more doctors. A doctor bought the old West Cove Theater, that was bought by a medical group and converted to a medical office, where they finally had an opportunity to buy in a much smaller setting. And if you look at the newer cities, and it's different, if you, some of you guys know our dairy property, a lot of cities now, the newer cities, don't have places where you can buy individual properties anymore. You can either go into a shopping center, but there's no longer individual property owners going down where you can own the own property underneath, own the property underneath your business. It is a thing of the past, older cities have that, newer cities have 20-acre parcels, and you're always a tenant. But next to my dairy, it's the dairy, and some of you who remember the old Vine Library next to the dairy, and it goes down to different buildings all the way down, each one, there's five different owners on a 300-foot, 400-foot block, there's five different property owners. They're similar to the problem we've always had in developing downtown. We have 25 property owners and 75 businesses, so every property owner owns or has two buildings down there, and it causes problems when you want to remodel it. Because the 25 owners can never agree on anything. They can only agree that they disagree with each other, and they do that quite often. So that's just some of the thought process, at least I'm looking at, so I want to make sure everyone knows in fairness.
Councilwoman Lane.
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, we have a great police department. And in that video, there were no sworn officers, and, you know, obviously, I can't say too much about this tonight because we have an internal investigation going on. But obviously, I'm disappointed, and I have deep concerns regarding this issue with the lack of judgment exercised by some of our employees, and also the video company that was involved in this. And what I think is very important is that we look towards the future and how we're going to prevent this from ever happening again, because this was disturbing on all levels. I also want to thank the men and women of our police department. You do a great job protecting our city and all of us. Thank you so much for risking your lives and, and taking care of us. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sanderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's interesting sitting up here this evening, it feels very quiet. As far as the demeanor on everybody here, I wanted just to make a quick comment in reference to what's going on with the police video. I do believe we have a good staff that's going to take care of it and protects, protect our tax dollars, because I think that is something that, that has been abused in that realm. And I'd like to next move on quickly to emotions. Elections bring on emotions, whether good, bad, or indifferent. I hope that we sit up here and represent you in a good way, because that's our job, is to be professional and to work together. I was making notes about what people say when they come up to the dais, and it saddens me to hear the negativity that goes on when we all care about the same thing, and that is the city of West Covina. We all want the best for our city. I hear them speaking about a hit piece that was out. Well, every election, there's been hit pieces. There was a hit piece on Mr. Tuohy, Ms. Lane, and myself. I've had to spend the last couple of years being called a corrupt, dirty politician. And it's unfair to my family. You know, we need to work on what's best for the city. We may not always agree, but we need to put that aside and move on to the next item on the agenda. We have an award sitting here tonight. I got a, I had a conversation with our city manager, and said, we have to get another trophy case, because how amazing, other people are recognizing what our community is. You guys, we live in an amazing city. We may not always agree, we may say things to try and hurt people, but sitting up here for 11 years, I see that, and I get that, and it happens. And I'm not trying to lecture anybody, I just want everybody to know this is a wonderful city, and that's why I'm sitting here. And I think that's why everybody else is sitting here, too. And that's why people run. And to our police and our fire, they're amazing people, they do a great job for this community. Believe me, I've called them and I've needed them for my family, for emergency services and whatnot. But, and we have an item upcoming that talks about open space and what we're going to do and the development. And I think in 2000, I got elected for wanting to preserve open space. I have horses, and it's no surprise. And I heard some residents get up here, say they talk about animal rights, they talk about open space and trees, and I sure hope they're here when I'm, again, fighting that battle to protect that as well. But I think we have projects that come into the city that we need to look at individually. I think that things being said that have been hurtful, you know, you just take it and you understand what that, hopefully, where that person's coming from. So thank you all for being here tonight and, and listening, and, and hope we can all move forward together on with that.
Councilwoman Harpers.
You know, it's really sad, again, that everybody just believes the negative, and there's so many great things that have happened in the city in this past year. Over 3,000 new jobs have been created, we've been to more grand openings in this year than I can ever remember. Again, receiving that award, beating out Glendale and Burbank, who have movie studios and have so many great things. We have wonderful police and fire, we don't have a utility tax. But again, people want to believe the negative. And it's just really sad that our society right now is based on being negative, that they can use our police department's equipment. You know, that is just absolutely ridiculous, and that everybody just is okay with that. I hope this investigation, that they find these people, you know, we know who they are, but that they get fined, that these people get fined, you know, the permits, they should have had permits, and that they pay for those permits. It's absolutely ridiculous. Again, that everybody just believes the negative, that they can believe that our police department is, is based on that stupid video. I don't know, it's just, it's absolutely sad.
Okay, with no more comments, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Is there any items wish to be pulled? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Moved by Sanderson, second.
Second.
By Harpers. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Any AB 1234 reports?
No.
Any city council comments? Councilwoman Lane.
Yeah, I just would like to congratulate you on winning the election. Also, Councilmember-elect Fred Sykes, congratulations as well. And, you know, I want to thank Councilmember Harpers. You, you've served us well in West Covina, you do a great job with all your hard work you put in to represent our city, and you've represented us with honor, grace, and dignity. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And when it's time for an adjournment, I also have an adjournment as well.
Okay. Councilmember Tuohy.
I also would like to congratulate the mayor, Steve Hertford, for your, winning your election. And Councilmember-elect Fred Sykes, congratulate you. I did phone you also on your election, and to Karen, for the time you served, I understand some, it's great sitting in a seat, sometimes it's not, depending upon the day of the week. So I want to thank you for your time, and I understand it's a lot of time and effort and you, to put your, to go out there and to put your name, to open it up to potential attacks and stuff, that happens in general. So I understand how elections go, and honestly, I would appreciate some of the people that spoke about the hit pieces. When they were done on me, some of them didn't even come here and say anything. So I know hit pieces in general should be bad, not just when they're against someone you may support. You know, to me, it should be fair and balanced, you know? And some of them, I would expect some, because I spoke to the one gentleman before Forrest, and I have had some great discussions before on the phone, before the election, not this election, but I don't remember the phone call, I remember the subject, but I know we had some great conversations when my campaign worker turned over the phone call to me, and it was Forrest Wilkins talking to me. So I spent around an hour on the phone with you. I know, I don't think I still got his vote, but I still spent an hour with him, just to make sure he knows he was important to me. So thank you.
Councilwoman Harpers.
I just want to say thank you so much to my colleagues for appointing me here. It was awesome to be here for the 10 months, to be born and raised in West Covina, graduating from West Covina High School, to even be a council member for 10 months. Again, what an honor to serve alongside of you guys. You guys work very hard. Again, to be able to go to grand openings, to be able to receive awards on behalf of the city was just really amazing. Thank you so much to staff, you did a really wonderful job. It was a pleasure working with you and for you, and also for the residents. Whether you like me or not, I was here, I answered every phone call, because that was my job. And thank you again to our men and women on the police department and also on the fire department. You guys do such a wonderful job, and I'm so sorry that you have to go through this. So again, thank you very much, and thank you to the residents. Congratulations, Councilmember-elect Sykes, and also to, congratulations, Mr. Mayor. You do a great job representing us, and I'm proud that I was able to serve alongside of you guys. Again, thank you.
Thank you. Let me just say to all the candidates that ran, thank you for running. It is always courageous to put your name on the ballot and to develop a message out in the community. I want to remind everybody, the election's not final yet, so there's still, our ballots being counted, but at some point, it's a moot point, but it is not official at this point. It's kind of ironic how sometimes relationships go in the city, and people that are your friend, one week turn out to be your enemy the next week, and it's kind of sad. And we, we try to run positive campaigns, sometimes supporters develop messages that not necessarily our message, but they want to carry it. I had a guy named Phil Moreno, I know Phil, he's worked out with him at the gym, and he passed a piece of negative hit piece stuff that I would call hit piece on me around town all, all election. But I mean, that's part of campaigning. And, you know, I think we were all subject to negativity in some form or another. Try to deal with the issues and answer questions of the voters, and it's always a challenge. And I know that everybody who ran in this election had that same challenge. But at some point in time, we have the election over and the community comes back together, and hopefully, we are proud to be residents of West Covina. It's, it's a great city. I mean, we have 115,000 people in this city, and what, 7,500 votes. So I mean, if there's anything wrong with this city, it's apathy, but I remember when I was in ESPN High School, and I was a public relations director, and you couldn't get any of the students to want to do anything. So it's kind of been a pattern over the years. But we should all be proud that we live in the city, we should all be proud that we came through this election, and, you know, besides replacing one sign in a yard 10 times, I mean, it was pretty good. So I'm glad it's over with, and hopefully, we can move on to the business of the city. Let me say something, too, about the business of the city. You know, we're never, ever, and Lloyd, you and I do this, we never, ever agree on every issue. But I don't like it when people come up and say, I'm never going to be a friend of somebody who does this, or somebody that does that. It's, it's, it's the issue we want to debate, it's not the relationship with the person. So hopefully, we can, we can all agree that we're debating the issue and not, not the relationship that we have. So with that, I do want to thank Councilwoman Harpers for her service on the council. You did a great job, and we're all proud of you, and I know that you're going to stay involved in the community, and we look forward to seeing you around town. And to all my colleagues, thanks for all your support as my year as mayor. I know the next meeting is the reorganization, and Mayor Pro Tim Mike Tuohy will take over, and we'll have a good year next year, too. So with that, I have one adjournment. Councilwoman Lane, why don't you start?
Okay. I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of Brittany Vandergoes. Her parents, Mike and Tina Vandergoes, grew up here in West Covina, and she has a lot of family here. As a matter of fact, her, she's the niece of Commissioner Robyn Sue Setello, and she passed away unexpectedly a week and a half ago at the young age of 18. So I'd like to send our condolences and to her family, and keep her family in our thoughts and prayers.
Okay, and I have an adjournment for former West Covina Community Enhancement Officer John Crook. John passed away, and our prayers and thoughts are with the Crook family. Any others? Okay, we'll adjourn in memory of those two individuals.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or adjourned.